Start them taking, would you please, this pledge. Pledge to the light of the United States of America. Consider Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you please say in prayer?
Yes. Father God in heaven, we come to you in the mighty name of Jesus. We thank you for everything that you're doing here in the city of Montavista. Thank you for everything you're doing in the valley here. God, we ask for your guidance and your direction. We ask that you will guide us in the right direction, God, in order to manifest these visions that the city council has for the future of our city. God, we thank you and we love you in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you. Need to have a second?
So we're gonna have a second modification. I'm gonna just be to switch items J, A, in the order so their resolutions that were in this presentation.
Okay.
Switch.
Make that modification adopted.
Yes, we'll do this one first, then we'll have a second.
Councillor Johnson?
Here.
Councillor Segala?
Here.
Councillor Ellathorpe?
Here.
Mayor Becker?
Here.
Councillor Lorenz will be out tonight, a quorum is declared.
Okay, modifications to the agenda?
I move to modify the agenda to add the award of the CIP bid and authorize the city manager to execute the contract.
Now the item L three is permitted, approved?
L three.
Have a second?
It's been moved and seconded to modify the agenda, award the CIP bid along with allowing the city manager to sign the contract. Is L three, any more discussion? Jenny?
Councillor Segala?
Aye.
Councillor Ellathorpe?
Aye.
Councillor Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Mayor Becker, if you could also modify the agenda to make item J and item K switch ordinances, we can afford resolutions based on the nature of the resolution.
Aye, so move.
I second that motion.
It's been moved to modify, moved and seconded to modify the agenda to rule resolution and ordinances, move about ordinances into, in front of resolutions, any more discussion? Jenny?
Councillor Segala?
Aye.
Councillor Johnson?
Aye.
Councillor Ellathorpe?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Approval consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda and review approval of accounts payable.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda for the minutes of regular meeting, October 3rd, 2019, and review and approval of accounts payable, any more discussion? Jenny?
Councillor Ellathorpe?
Aye.
Councillor Johnson?
Aye.
Councillor Segala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Citizen comments, special presentations, scheduled appearances. In order to be included on this portion of the agenda, you have to file the appropriate paperwork from the city clerk no later than noon on Monday prior to a meeting. So the first one we have is Grip Tape. Is there a form up there?
Yes.
Is there any form? Guys, make sure you sign in, please, on that paper, and then state your name where everybody can hear, please.
My name is Jedrick Sanders.
Hi, I'm Madison Edmonds.
Welcome.
Alright, so basically, we're all here on behalf of Grip Tape, which is in a nonprofit organization for youth. And basically, the idea behind Grip Tape is to give youth, like, the opportunity to get a grant of up to $500, four times a year, we do it quarterly. And basically, they can apply to do anything they want to learn about, whether it be learning how to play the guitar, learning another language. I myself, I'd built a website on lupus and arthritis because that's something that affects me, so I wanted to learn about it. So basically, it doesn't matter what you want to learn about, you could want to learn about tattooing, or, it doesn't matter. We just want to give youth the opportunity to learn about these things and give them, like, a foundation to learn them on. So, that's basically the original Grip Tape. We're an organization that branches off of it, and we're called the Community Challenge, and that's a, twice, twice a year, and we're the first one, so we're, like, the test subjects. And so, that's giving youth $25,000 to make a change in their community. And so, basically, what we're working on is trying to build, like, an arcade and a nightclub for youth, but, like, during weeknights, it would be open to the general public, so families could go and bond and get to know each other better. And then, on weekend days, it would also be the same thing. But weekend nights, it would be closed off to just teens, like, under, like, 21, we don't want any alcohol or drug use in it, that's part of the reasons we have it, is to try and, like, reduce drug use in the valley and provide a safe environment for youth to go and have fun without having to, like, go party or something, which is where a lot of youth are going, because there's just not a lot to do here, especially in Montavista, like, there's a little bit more in Alamosa, but we'd like to open this business, type of thing. It would be like a nonprofit, though, like, it would be, like, open and run by us, and, like, the money wouldn't be, like, oh, just to, like, aid off of it. And so, basically, what we're working on, what we've done so far, is that we've had a little prototype event to the public at the Montavista High School, and we built, basically, almost like a floor plan for what we'd like it to look like. And basically, we had, like, arcade games, we had where we'd like our little concession thing to be, which would be, like, non-open food, so we didn't have to go through all the codes and things, like, bags of chips, Gatorade, things of that nature. And so, and now we've working with, we're working with Wall Smith and Batmans in Alamosa, we've also worked with the Small Business Development Center in Alamosa, and we're just here to inform you what we're doing and see if there's anything you're interested in helping with, and... Oh, and one last thing. So another thing that we'd like to do with this is to make it like an entrepreneur-type of thing for youth, so once our original board members, there's seven of us, youth, working to pull this off, once we finish this, we'd like to pass it down to other youth to try and get some experience in and running a business and getting that entry work experience. So, I'll pass it over to Jedrick, and he'll tell you about the budget.
So, for the nightclub arcade here, you can see the floor plan here, in the floor plan, you can see there's a kitchen and office and the main area pictured. This nightclub arcade area would have arcade machines for teens to use, it would have an area for them to stand and mingle or dance or whatever they decide to do, it would have a nice sound system, it would have chairs and tables for them to sit. Like Madison mentioned, it would also have a snack bar, where they would offer bagged chips, Gatorade, things like that for teens to eat and drink. This one also has an office, which is where security and kind of the management of the building would be handled. This one was also shown with a kitchen, which is, of course, where the food would be prepared, if we need a kitchen to prepare food. However, in this floor plan, you'll notice that there are no bathrooms pictured. That's because in this one, we are actually trying out one where we are hoping to share bathrooms with another building or location nearby, and we may even try to do that with the kitchen. As for the budget, on this one, we have $25,000 as the project budget startup from the program we're in. We're also working on a budget of the startup costs and the ongoing costs, which are two separate parts of the first year's budget. In addition to that, we're also consulting with the SBDC, the Small Business Development Center, and Wall Smith and Batman to develop the first year's budget with them, their accountants. Also, in addition to that, we're applying for grants. Overall, we looked at applying for a grant with the Colorado Health Foundation recently. As for what's next, currently, we are looking for a building, a nice space to set up our thing, we're looking for a building probably in Montavista, most likely. In addition to that, we're applying for more grants, we're looking to get a certain amount of more money, just in grants, to help us set up the building and to, if it needs refurbishment, things like that. We are also making an in-depth business plan and working in coalition with the Small Business Development Center to help facilitate the startup of this business. It'll hope, it'll be a nonprofit, we'll, you know, try to help teens in the valley. Do you guys have any questions?
Yeah, did they teach you public speaking in this organization?
They do not teach you public speaking, but...
Well, then, then I have to congratulate you for being able to communicate, I appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
This is phenomenal. So you said you had a building, although I didn't have a question, where you were going to share bathrooms, but then you indicated that you don't really have a building yet. Are we talking about two different...
Well, so, so far, we're in the process of actually looking for buildings, we've actually talked to a couple of real estate companies, and we talked to a property management company, there was a, it's Eclipse Property Management in Alamosa, and we actually, a portion of our group went and looked at a building with them, and we are deciding on one right now, kind of looking for them. And so far, we, we have not found one that we're set on or anything, we just, on the floor plan you saw there, that was one where we pictured it as sharing bathrooms, we don't, we are not sure if that'll be what actually ends up happening with that floor plan, it's, it's very early stages, that's what we're hoping to have, that's the same thing for the budget, the budget's very, very early, it was made prior to us deciding to fully go the nonprofit route, so it is, at best, an estimation of what we're hoping to see.
Are there other towns that, where there's a Grip Tape organization established?
So, as far as the Community Challenge go, the San Luis Valley is the only one with that, but as Grip Tape, the original, it's kind of national, we work all over the country, I'll float, I'm gonna be flying to New York in a couple months to work with other youth from across the country to, like, run the organization, work on goals and planning, so it's nationwide.
Well, it's a very good idea and a wonderful thing for you guys, the younger kids, and if nothing even ever comes of it other than your experience of doing the research and putting all this together, what an amazing thing, right? You guys have learned a lot, and you've even taught us, I think I'm learning too, right along with you, and I hope that we can get this going, I think that's great.
So you said you looked at a building here?
Yeah, so, we're two of the seven people participating in this, the seven youth who are in charge of the project, and I believe three other youth in our group who are kind of the, the building portion, like, the building group, I suppose, they're the ones out looking for a building, they did go and see one, um, do you remember what the building was?
Um, I think it's the one in the workforce.
Yeah.
There's, like, something open there in the workforce building.
Oh, the rest of them.
So, right now, we're just trying to find a building, trying to build our budget, and I guess mainly, the main thing is a building.
Well, keep us informed, let us know how this unfolds for you. If we can help in any way, we will, I think that's great.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is there anything specific you were looking for from the council? Other than my congratulations for such a terrific presentation?
So we talked with Forrest about maybe looking for a building, like, I had a meeting with him last week, and so, he's gonna try and look for buildings, see if there's anything available, even things that would need a lot of... Why can't I think of the word?
Refurbishment?
Yes, refurbishment.
That's okay.
So we're just, I don't know, mainly, we're here to inform you, and if there's anything you'd like to help with, we're always looking for support and backing.
At this point in time, we, we shouldn't have a plethora of buildings for, to, but, yeah, I know what you, what you really want is, is the right one, the right location and layout, so, yeah, I appreciate your struggle with that.
Attached to another business or another building, or something that's already established or something. Great news.
Yeah, if it's attached to another building that also already has bathrooms or a kitchen or something, we can kind of presume that their bathrooms and whatnot are up to code and everything, which helps us a lot, because that's a difficulty, is getting all of our stuff up to code and, you know, suitable for the public, of course.
Right, that would be a challenge. Well, good luck, let us know how things come about for you.
Of course.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Very good presentation.
Yes.
Very good. Jada and Sidney Woodkey? Don't forget to sign in.
Hi, my name is Sidney Woodkey, I am in the seventh grade, and I am thirteen, thirteen years old.
Hi, my name is Jada Woodkey, and I am in fourth grade, and I am ten years old.
Does need to stay close to the microphone, please?
How and why trees, two girls in a dream that started when we were eight and eleven. Shade and beauty, she will be planted at middle school and town parks, three years of working hard has brought us to this point.
Two thousand eight, two thousand eighteen and nineteen, first year of our tree growing, twenty-five students, grades one through twelve, two hundred trees and shrubs.
Two thousand eighteen dash nineteen, we worked with the Forest Service, nursery was made to give plant a better start.
Nursery established behind Montavista High School, success rate ninety-eight percent, only three lost in the first five months.
High school, middle school, and elementary students, we use soil, pots, fence, irrigation system, fertilizer, and mulch, soil was donated by Rocky Mountain Soils in Alamosa.
Our next steps, this is our nursery, Forest Service will be asked, when is the best time to move our nursery to their new home? Finding new homes for trees and shrubs.
Future, two hundred plants started in two thousand eighteen dash nineteen, goal of four hundred, six hundred new trees for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, have more of the community involved, have already received support from Montavista Tree Board.
Contributors, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, Rocky Mountain Soils in Alamosa, SLV Garden Center, Colorado State Forest Service, Montavista School District, and Mama Duck.
Contact us at Jada and Sidney Woodkey, in care of Erin Woodkey, Montavista High School, seven one nine eight five two three five eight six, A A R O N W at monti.k12.co.us.
Thanks for dreaming with us.
Where did you plant, oh, didn't you plant that first set of trees or shrubs?
Yes, last year, we planted them, and we put them behind the high school, so we could keep an eye on them and water them until they were strong enough to be distributed throughout Montavista.
You have a really good success rate, I worked at the Grady House, so we didn't even have that good of a success rate. That's amazing.
Thank you.
What a great dream.
Thank you.
I think it's wonderful. Trees are wonderful, you know, you just look down and you see inside the city, you see trees, you get outside of the city, there's no trees.
And what's the saying, a man who plants trees believes in the future, there's something along those lines, so good for you guys.
Thank you.
What, what are, what would you like from council, is there something you're seeking?
We are asking for two, six thousand dollars for trees, soil, fence, and some more water and irrigation, so we can keep an eye on the trees.
Is that what you're asking tonight, or your total hope is for all the trees?
For all the trees.
Okay, so you don't need six thousand tonight?
But anything would help.
Yeah.
But anything would help. Well, to be honest, we kind of had a conversation about this prior to the meeting, and we're sort of at the end of our budget, but that doesn't mean you can't come back and ask for another bit at midterm, and I think that we decided we had about two hundred and fifty dollars that we could contribute right now, so that's a start.
Thank you.
And if you would come back at midterm and kind of maybe keep us informed about what's going on, possibly, there would be some more as time unfolds.
Okay.
You make that motion.
Yeah, I think we need to make it a motion, and, and I would move to give Jada and...
Sidney.
Sidney's dream, the support from the city, because I think it's not just your dream, I think it's a wonderful dream for the community, and how wonderful, and I think we could do two hundred and fifty, that's what I would like to move.
So it's been moved and seconded to donate two hundred and fifty dollars to Jada and Sidney Woodkey for their dream of planting trees? Is there any more discussion?
I just wanted to say, I think that quote that we were talking about, I think it says, to those people who are planting trees, knowing that they will never be able to sit underneath the shade of our planting tree, finally realizing what the night is all about.
So good for you, make it grow. Alright, make your vision and your dream grow, include other kids, and, what a wonderful thing.
Thank you.
Jenny?
Councillor Johnson?
Aye.
Councillor Ellathorpe?
Aye.
Councillor Segala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
That's awesome, you plant trees every year for Arbor Day, that's really cool.
Well, keep us in mind, come back as, as the midterm budget unfolds, in about...
About July.
Yeah, about, well, approach before July, give us a heads up in, in May or June, and what you guys are thinking, and then we can figure out a way to maybe continue that support.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Very good job, girls, very good job. Sky rental discount for the Rotary Outdoor Gun Show?
That would be me today, my name is Larry Foster, I'm representing the Montavista Rotary Club, I appreciate you considering our discount request for the Sky High Rental for the Outdoor and Gun Show coming up shortly, it is one of Rotary's fundraising things, we use our money for scholarships to purchase books for college students and a variety of other philanthropic activities. Questions?
That's, that's something we've done in the past.
It is.
For the gun show practice.
It is.
New.
Correct.
How many years has, how many years have you done this gun show, it's been a while, haven't you?
It is, I don't really know.
It's pretty well attended, kind of a big thing?
It's, it's one of our big fundraisers, I don't really know what our gate is, because I haven't been in Rotary, this Rotary Club that long, but I do know that we have over fifty tables, vendors who are gonna be there selling their wares, so, and we expect a very good attendance.
That we approved the discount for the Rotary Gun Show as presented?
I second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approved the discount for the Rotary Gun Show, is there any more discussion? Jenny?
Councillor Segala?
Aye.
Councillor Johnson?
Aye.
Councillor Ellathorpe?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, you guys have a good time out there, hopefully sure and see ya.
Yeah, come on and see us.
Snow removal policy, Mr. Vance, Public Works. Just a little extra, oops, that's right, I got it. You think this is gonna happen?
Oh, we hope so.
I think you've been in the area.
I'm gonna be the downer tonight versus the last three presentations we've had, so...
Already have to follow.
This is gonna, so, just real quick on the Jada and Sidney, they came to their tree board, and I just wanted to thank them, I thought they did a really good job doing a presentation, and I thought this was something that council would like to see, because your dealings and how you feel about youth, I, I think it's really unique for a situation that involves both middle school, elementary, and high school students, all in one thing, going to do something for our city's future. They've got them planted, you know, behind the, the high school, you can see them, they're actually between where the high school is and the park shop, they're by the tennis courts, so you can kind of monitor how they develop and stuff, and they've done a really good job, we, we tried planting ten saplings last year, and we had a hundred percent failure rate. So they're doing exceptionally well. And the nice thing is, from what they say, these are going to be trees that will be one day in our parks, in our right of ways, and in our residents' homes and in their yards, and it's something they can always take with them, that they can drive by with their kids and their grandkids and say, "We planted that tree." So, really good, so I appreciate council doing that for them, very nice. My thing tonight is a little different, we started this last year on, after some of the bigger snows, and I told you I'd have to bring it back to you, so in front of you tonight for presentation is our snow removal policy. In your packet, and what I just handed you, are different snow policies from different communities, the late, that one there was the latecomer, and that's from Alamosa, so you would know exactly, because you always hear different things about Del Norte, Alamosa, how they do things versus how Monty do things, so you now actually have their written policies. It is in the packet, and if any citizens want them, I can post them on our city website as well. As with any policy, policies are really pretty much, other than those set by state and federal regulations, are what the community wants. We've had a, a snow removal policy in effect for, I want to say, probably close to a decade now. It has worked in most snowstorms, last year with the above-average snowfall, we did receive quite a few complaints, enough complaints that I decided I needed to bring it in front of this council, to see if there was anything you wanted to do differently, just for the people listening and for those in the audience, our snow removal policy, in a very simple summary, is we plow the downtown roads... in a very simple summary, is we plow the downtown roads to the center and haul those away so people can access the businesses. And what we classify as the downtown is pretty much from two eighty-five, one sixty intersection to basically Monroe, where it turns going to Safeway and Second Street. So that includes Washington, Adams, Jefferson, Madison, and Monroe, and Second Street. Everything else is either arterial or collector on what we call our primary route. And that would be like Sixth Avenue, Prospect out here, Chico Camino. And that is primarily, those routes are designed to get people from a residential area, either to a highway or to a business center. And that's what those roads do. So those are our primary routes. Our secondary routes don't get hit until we have six inches of snow or more. And those are what you would classify as your residentials. So those, everything that's not in the downtown is plowed to the outside. In the heavier snows, the windrows that get pushed, we start in the center, and we just push both directions from the center of the road to the left or right. Okay? So each side gets an equal amount of snow. That's our current policy. We did go through, we had two public hearings here at City Hall. Most of council attended those, I think. I think just about everyone got to hear comments from the public. I thought it was really good discussions and some dialogue. We also went on our city website, and we posted a survey. And we had survey results, and those results are in your packet. We basically asked three questions. Which way do you want the city to plow snow? Of those that took the survey, about thirty-eight percent of them said to the curb, and sixty-one percent, sixty-two percent said to the center. Second question was, should we plow the residential streets, or, excuse me, when should we plow the residential streets, the depth of the snowfall? At one inch, got eleven percent. Three inches got fifty-two percent of the vote, six inches thirty-four, and never was three percent. And then the last question, and the most, one that I think is most important, is, would you be willing to pay a fee for snow removal operations and equipment of two dollars per month attached to the water and sewer bills? Of that, sixty-five percent said they would be willing to. Thirty-five percent said no. Years ago, the city did have a policy where they did plow the snow to the center. That policy was revoked shortly before I came to the city of Montevista. In fact, as I sat probably my first week in the chair as director, I got to process a bill from one of the contractors from the year prior, snowfall, and that one bill was twenty-five thousand dollars for one snow event, to haul snow from the city. So financially, the city's really not in a position without some sort of a fee to adequately deal with snow pushed into the center of the road. Eventually, you will have to haul it away. With on-street parking, and even without on-street parking, some of our streets are narrow enough that once you get a center line in, there's really not much traffic. While the survey was going on, we started to receive letters from the emergency services voicing their concerns. Our first letter came from the ambulance service. They were concerned about being able to respond to emergencies in a timely manner if it was pushed to the center. And then we received a letter from the fire department, all of which are in your packets, that also mimicked what the ambulance service said, is they're just, with the big trucks that they have, they're not going to be able to make those corners with a windrow of snow stuck in the middle of the street, especially one that has set for a week or so after it's, you know, the freeze thaw cycle. It's going to be so hard, they're simply not going to get through it. And then our own police chief, he sent an email also expressing his concern. Even when we had the big snow last year, people were trying to jump the center berm, so they didn't have to go, basically, if we plow to the center, every street in town becomes a one-way. You can either go north or south, which you can't do either. If you live on the east side of that street, and you back out of your driveway, you're gonna have to head north, and it's just the opposite on the other side, until the next major intersection. So you can't back out and choose which way you want to go. So it does produce a lot of issues. With snow season fast approaching, I needed to bring it to you, because we never really sat down and said what you wanted as a council, as a policy. So in my memo to you, I listed a few options, just to kind of help with the discussion. Option one is to leave the existing policy in place. It works fine for most snows, and has the least impact to the city and to our residents. Nothing changes from what it's been. Option two is to change the policy to meet one of the proposed question changes, and that's from, going from six inches to three inches in the residentials. That gets us out into the residential sections a little bit more often. Maybe we wouldn't have quite as many spun-out cars like that. But the negative side of that is it does create us making windrows that people then have to shovel. Okay? And option three is kind of the extreme, is we can change the snow removal policy completely, and change the direction of plowing to the center throughout town, and institute the two-dollar fee on the water and sewer bills. This creates much more work for the city. Having several months to think about it, the only way we're going to be able to accomplish that and minimize, and I stress minimize, we will not alleviate it altogether, the concerns that were expressed by our emergency services, is we will have to put an additional person in a loader to clear intersections, and probably use both of our loaders and both of our backhoes in order to do that in a time-efficient manner. So what I would guess, the cost of that is going to be roughly double. So our overtime cost is going to be pretty close to double what it's been in the last few years, just because we'll have more personnel sooner on the roads. We usually have one to two operators do the initial attack on a snowstorm. And then once the snowstorm has stopped, then we come back in with a full crew during normal business hours, and haul away the downtown, and at that same time, use some of the other personnel to go widen intersections and do that. If it goes to the center, we're gonna have to be doing that simultaneously as we're attacking the snowfall. In the event, someone has a medical emergency, or a house has a chimney fire, so the emergency services are guaranteed to get through the intersections. So as a budgetary thing, I think it's pretty fair to say our budget is going to increase. There will have to be a fund set up to handle that two dollars, and we will have to contract with at least one, if not two, local contractors that have several dump trucks, to be able to haul snow in the bigger events. And I would guess that over a course of winter, we will probably have to do that anyways, just to be able to keep up. You have to remember, in the winter months, I have three trucks that are used as plow trucks. Only one is actually kept where it has a dump bed, and then we have a flatbed. We only use two trucks out of our three trucks fleet to haul snow. Everything else has a sander on it. So we either stop the icing, or we simply haul snow. So it's, like I said, we are not really that well-equipped to haul snow, or at least large quantities of snow. And last year, the big snowstorm we got right before Christmas, that was four days of hauling with our two trucks, just to clear the downtown. So, I mean, so, like I said, Paula, I know that's kind of a downer compared to the last ones we saw. So, but it's something we need to address.
I have a couple of questions. I'm in favor of the fee, and then getting all that taken care of. It sounds to me like, after analyzing the situation, that fee isn't anywhere near and close to covering. Is that, is that what I heard you saying?
Until we run it, I'm not, I can't say. I don't have any experience. If it's, if we have a, if we have winters like I've seen in the past, where we get a snowstorm, we don't see anything for another three, four weeks, then we're probably okay with our staff clearing the snow. However, if we start getting back-to-back every week a snowstorm, the accumulation will get to the point where we simply do not have the ability to maintain it. Okay? And that's going to be the issue. If we have a year like last year, I can guarantee you, my staff cannot handle that, period. We would have to contract, and like last year, we would have to contract, just based on last year, we would have had to contract three separate times to haul snow from the city. And those are snowstorms that were larger than eight inches. Okay?
So my other question is, what's your choice?
I, here's my thing. Not gonna be popular, and I know it's not. Most places that I know of plow to the curb. It is the safest. It keeps the roadway open the widest. And one of the things we can do on our end to better that is to attack the roads sooner, so people don't go out and clear their sidewalks, and clear their driveways, to let it sit until we get the next big snowstorm, and then we come out. So there are things with that we can do. We live in Colorado. Whether we like it or not, it snows in Colorado. Everywhere you live, you deal and you shovel snow. We can try to implement, and I can work with Forest, if we can get a list, because one of the suggestions that I really liked, one of the citizens said, why don't you get a list together of elderly people that don't have assistance, and see if we can help them with that assistance. I'd rather see the city try to implement something like that, where we can help some of our elderly people that simply can't get around, to make them a little more mobile, and a little easier to plow. But to plow into the center, you're going to get people, and I promise you this, that do not, everybody has a specific way. They go to Safeway, and they go home. And those people, when they see that windrow, and they realize they went the wrong way, and they now have to either go all the way down to the block, do a U-turn, and come all the way back up to the house. Most of them are not going to do that. You can look at the winter time now, anywhere where the windrows are, people jump them. They jump them in the downtown, they get stuck. They will do that in the residential streets. And with you have on-street parking, you will, in essence, close that street until that vehicle is moved. That is a simple truth.
Well, and I guess my response to that is exactly what you just said. This is Colorado, and we're gonna have to deal with snow. And if you have to deal with windrow in the middle, then you're gonna have to deal with that. I personally had so many complaints last year, and I know the city did, I know Forest had them, of older people. I myself, I'll just speak for myself, I had my sidewalk cleaned, and I went out the next day, and there was this much snow piled up. I couldn't climb over it. I couldn't walk over it. I couldn't shovel it. It was icy. And I was just one person, and I have old people up and down the street, who were really in a bad way. I helped them get groceries and did what I could. And that was with the side-to-side plowing. And I just, like you say, there's not an easy answer. I know that center windrow is sometimes problematic as well, unless it can be removed right away, or, gosh, I was worried that I was gonna get in trouble because I had my sidewalk cleaned off, and then here we came with a big snowplow on top of it. And so I, I don't know. It's a hard thing to figure out.
Ideally, we would try to plow sooner, especially in the residential areas, and plow so we can just pile it in the curb, and not throw it up onto the sidewalks. That's easier said than done. But if we can attack it sooner, because I think a lot of the complaints that I heard last year was, they cleared, the snow set, got heavy, we then pushed it all the way over.
It was icy.
Yeah. And then those are, those are the conditions that make it really difficult. So I think if we could hit it during the initial snowstorm while it's still falling, I think we would be better off, and I think the citizens would be less complaining. I don't think, I don't think either way is going to solve the issue. But part of my job is life and safety. And I struggle with the idea of doing something on one of our roadways that's going to prevent an emergency services getting to somebody's house, and unfortunately, that resulting in a death that could have been prevented.
That's true. I also know at my house, they couldn't have gotten that more than six feet from my sidewalk anyway, even if I'd had a fire. Had an ambulance crew, would have had to climb up over that big berm that was made in the snow. I mean, either way isn't, isn't perfect, you know? It's gonna be a problem. And like you say, we live in Colorado, and, you know, you just get out there and do what you have to do.
Right. And the difference in the scenario you just presented is the vehicle, the emergency vehicle, and those in it actually got to your house. Whereas what I'm saying with a center, that vehicle stuck a block or three blocks away from your house.
Right.
So, that's why I said, it's.
They could have gotten in front of it, not too.
I think Patrick's here as well, representing the fire department. If he wants to chime in, he can.
Yeah, Patrick Sullivan, one is to my department. I would, you know, reiterate what Rob said. It's difficult for us, the size of apparatus that we run. We typically come in to reach into the street. So if you have snow in the middle of the street, and you figure that, when you stack it in the middle, and it falls one to one, and you have a four-foot berm, there's eight foot out of the center of the road. How wide is the street?
Thirty-four feet, curb to curb.
Thirty-four feet, you take eight out of the right way. My truck's almost nine feet wide. That's one truck. Now you put a car that's eight foot wide, parked next to the curb, and I got eight foot taken out in the middle, and now I'm trying to squeeze a nine-foot truck down this narrow area. Well, you can just drive up on the berm. Truck weighs about forty-five thousand. You get up on that berm, that truck wants to slide. And so now I'm into, you know, Mrs. Smith's car, Mr. Jones's house is on fire, and I'm, you know, I'm stuck, can't go, can't go forward, can't go back. And it creates a problem for us. I don't, I wouldn't want to be robbed, because it's the ease between a rock and hard rock. Again, the emergency service side, for us, it's safer for us. If it's to the curb, we can crawl over the curb. We can drag hose over the curb. But I can't get an apparatus over three or four foot. Just, it just doesn't happen. So that would, that would be our brothers. That's what our other supports is. We would protect that over the curb. Again, it's a no-win situation. No matter what decision you guys make, what policy you enforce, it's gonna be difficult. It's gonna be a trial and error deal.
I say we should just be thankful for the snow and deal with it.
Whatever.
I look at, like Pat says, the safety of it for these guys, because they're out there in sub-zero temperatures, trying to get in and take care of somebody or something like that. My personal opinion, and I really don't care. But if my house's on fire, he better be able to get to my house. If it's all over somebody saying, well, they want it in the middle, and he can't get to my house.
That's a bigger issue.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna shovel my driveway out on my street. I will speak before my neighbors, and on more street, you go ahead and put it to the curb. I will speak before my neighbors, and on more street, you go ahead and put it to the curb. I'll deal with my neighbors.
It sounds like to the curb is the.
It is the standard way.
Is that what most cities do?
Yeah, and I think maybe just to clarify a few things. The paper I gave you is, this paper is actually Alamosa, the City of Alamosa's Snow Removal Policy. They have in there, if you read, and you go down the streets, "Primary and secondary routes in a Class One or Class Two storm will be plowed to the outside edge of the travel lane, allowing parking at the curb." "In a Class Three event, these routes will be plowed, but then plowed back to the center where they'll be picked up and hauled away." And they classify theirs as a Class Three is more than three inches of snow. So they plow to the curb first, get the streets open, and then they come back as they have time, plow it back to the center, and haul it away. Okay? Down at Del Norte, which is in your guys' packets in the computer, it's the very first one after the state law as far as clearing sidewalks, because you guys probably get some complaints about sidewalks and things like that. So now you have it from the Colorado statutes, what the law actually says. Town of Del Norte. "The town is not responsible for snow that is plowed from the streets and redeposited into private driveways. The department encourages to wait as long as possible to clear driveways in piling the snow to the right of the driveways to prevent from being blocked in. We try the best we can not to block the driveways, but sometimes this cannot be helped with the volumes of snow." The only thing they do a little differently is they try, in most situations, especially in their downtown area, is to push the snow to an edge of an intersection and pile it in the intersection. But their initial attack is to the curb. So, and that was a large percentage of some of the complaints we heard last year with Alamosa and Del Norte, they do this. They don't do it any different than we do. So.
I personally undertake our streets and keep it in the neighborhood. After all those big snowstorms.
We work hard at it. Like I said, we, we, as public works, we can do a better job for our citizens by putting a few more people out onto the streets on the initial attack and get it pushed back, so people aren't having to do the shoveling twice.
Can I say something? You're dealing with, and I don't know how I say it at the library, the width of the streets, other than the main street, seem to be smaller than some of those other towns. They're just narrower.
Some of them.
So when you do pile it in the middle, when the streets are narrower, then you're dealing with that issue too. So I think your idea of doing to the curb, I mean, I'm just observing, it's been really interesting. But I think going to the curb, even at the library, because I have people that come in, and they, they wanna just go right through that snow. They just think they're invincible. And we have, and we have all kinds of police, it's a disaster.
It is, it is. And, and, I mean, all of you have driven Adams Street after a snow. How fun is that to try to go without one block between Second and 160? You have cars parked, you have a winrow of snow. Half the time, your vehicle's up at an angle, and you're going, boy, I hope I don't slide. And that's what it will be like throughout town. It's simple. That's how it will be throughout town.
Sounds like what we need is plowing to the curb for safety and have a citizens committee immediately out as soon as possible with their four-wheels and their little plows and whatever, concentrating primarily, we'd have to have a map laid out of that of the disabled and elderly.
We'd have to get, gather that database. I don't have a database of people that are elderly or cannot. We, we can add that, and that's something.
But a citizens committee, I mean, there's a lot of people, I know there are a lot of people, because in heavy snow, I see them. Out with their four-wheels, or with their shovels, and they're helping people. And I, the city and the citizens of this town, I know would, would back that. And they would be out with maybe, let's get them some special vests or something, so that we can get out of their way and let them do their job. I can't think of anything else to solve that. It has to, for safety, number one, it has to be done this way. And for the assistance of folks that, that can't easily take care of that, we'll, we'll get out there as a city ourselves. And I'd certainly volunteer, because I don't have a four-wheel, but I'd be ready to invest ten more to be a part of it anyhow. Just, I don't know what else to do.
So I'm kinda hearing not to change the snow policy, leave it as it sits?
If I could interject here, I think what we're, unless council wants to correct me on this, three inches initial attack, plow to the curb. That's it for now.
I can bring that.
We're about the social aspect of trying to identify people that need assistance.
And we have good citizens that do go out and help. I know one counselor is sitting right over there, being really quiet, that came out and helped us with some snow last year. Counselor Segala. So, okay. Then I plan will be, next meeting, I will bring you a policy that states that in the form of a resolution, and see if that fits for your adoption. Okay?
We'll have that two-dollar fee on there.
The only time we would impose a two-dollar fee would be if we had to haul it. I just, the way we're describing it just means I have the staff, and I have the trucks and the equipment to do an initial attack earlier. It will affect our budget. There will be a little more overtime, because unfortunately, most snowstorms don't come between 7:30 in the morning and 5 o'clock in the evening. So that's going to be the exception. I mean, there will be some more overtime, but I can, under most years, I can, we can handle that. I can save money in other places to make up for that. And if we get a snow like last year, I'll come crying to you guys asking for a little more money. But I don't think we get that many snows like we did last year. Used to get those type of seasons. We need them, we need them, but from history, not so much anymore. A decade ago, two decades ago, definitely. So, okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Thanks, Pat. Oh, you're in.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you very much. Okay, we're to citizen comments. City Council welcomes your unscheduled comments. Please limit the comments to three minutes, and council will not take action at this meeting. Any comments?
What if you, I'll have to say. I was just sitting here listening, which I, it's dangerous. But what, what if on your snow, there you are, on your snow, what if you think about imposing a snow fee if it is a really bad snow? Not do the two-dollar fee, but do a snow fee. I mean, I'm just trying to save the city money. That's what I'm trained in, is saving money. But is, if you did a snow fee and, and introduced it to the community, I mean, they wouldn't have the two-dollar fee, but they would have, say, a snow fee, and you would take the average of what you went over the budget and address that. And then that would save the city money. But I mean, and people will pay people to plow their, or shovel out their sidewalks. But if you had that, if you contemplated that, it would get you out of the hole on your snow removal. Is that okay? Okay, sorry. I was just, my mind was going crazy, so.
Thank you. Any other comments? Come on up, Margot. It's good to see ya.
Yeah. Sorry about last time, and emergency. Margot Alexander, hi, everybody. I just wanted to say, I'm on the tree board. We had the young lady give us the presentation, and how excited we were to see young people so involved. And like you were saying, for Arbor Day, to have this group come, and we're plant trees all through town. It's just, it made my heart glad to see that. The other thing is, and I didn't bring the flyer, there is a concert, the SLV Band Concert coming up. And just to let you know, that's coming down the pike. And I, I had a question with this 1% increase that we're voting on. What hap, let's say, okay, it gets approved. Will it be always on to help with the police and the, and the streets and maintaining the, the sky high? Is that what that will be used for then down the road?
Yes.
Okay, I just wasn't sure how that would work out.
That's what it's for, it's earmarked for that?
Okay.
Project fund? It is for those projects.
Okay. And by the way, fasted building, good food, good entertainment, and what an asset to the city. Excellent. And I better put my name down here. And again, I know I grumbled last year with all this ice and snow, trying to get through it and climb over it, because my garage is like, and here my car, well, what am I gonna do? But you know what? You chop away, and you get out, and you make it work. And I lived in Broomfield for 33 years. Where did the snow go? Ting! Not that we liked it, but that's where it was. And we had a lot of snow up there. So, good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Margot. Anybody else? Okay. So you're gonna go to ordinances. Ordinance 896, adopting a 2020 budget. This is official, you brought the computer.
I know. They said you didn't drop it on the way up, so that's always a good thing.
Evening, Mayor, councilors. This evening, you have for a second reading, ordinance number 896, adopting the 2020 budget. This will be the second and final reading of this ordinance. As we've discussed before, ordinance is presented as the annual city, general city estimate for the 2020 fiscal year. And it complies with the charter setting forth detailed estimate of probable expenditures of the city government for the next ensuing fiscal year for all purposes, and also an estimate of the probable income from fines, licenses, water rents, and all other sources of revenue of the city. There have been no changes to the draft budget since our first reading. I don't know if you all have any questions in that regards. Otherwise, staff would recommend that you approve this ordinance this evening.
Any motion?
Yes, sir.
I move to approve on second reading, the ordinance 896, adopting a 2020 budget, on final reading.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance 896, adopting a 2020 budget on final reading. Is there any more discussion? Jenny?
Counselor Ellathorpe?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Segala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Oh, you're up there.
Yes, that's why I brought the laptop, so I didn't print out the sheet. So this is in relation to the budget. Resolution number 092018, a resolution establishing the annual mill levy for the City of Montavista, Colorado for the year beginning January 1, 2020, and ending December 31, 2020. We are required to pass a resolution every year that restates what our mill levy is. And the general corporate purposes mill levy for the City of Montavista is 14.740 mills. Has no change than the previous rate for, I don't know how many years, but for quite a while. And of course, this actually has to be passed after the budget, the way it's worded. That's why we changed that around. The certification evaluation is provided to the city by the county assessor for this purposes. It was provided to us on August 23 of 2019. And basically, there are some minor changes in that, which are good ones, in that the assessed valuation for the city has gone up slightly. So essentially, what this is, is you were following a state requirement to actually pass a resolution accepting the certification from the county and establishing our mill levy, which has not changed.
So we need a motion to accept this?
So I would move to accept the resolution 09, 2019, establishing annual mill levy for the City of Montavista, starting January 1, 2020, and ending December 1, 2020.
I would second that motion.
And moved and seconded, approve the resolution 09-2019, establishing the annual mill levy for the City of Montavista, starting January 1, 2020, and ending December 31, 2020. Is there any more discussion? Jenny?
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Segala?
Aye.
Counselor Ellathorpe?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
So your next item, Mr. Mayor, councilors, is a lease agreement between the City of Montavista and the Board of Trustees, the Carnegie Public Library of the City of Montavista. Pretty much a no-brainer, I think. Essentially, we have a lease agreement with the Carnegie Library Board for the Carnegie Library. This has gone on for however long that has been there, apparently. And so is lots five through eight, block 23 of the City of Montavista. And I cannot see anything from a staff standpoint why we would not recommend renewing the lease with the library board for the library, so. I don't know if you have any questions about that, but it is, obviously, you do a great job with the library, and certainly, staff would recommend you approve this. You would actually need a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the lease.
I would move that we authorize the mayor to sign the lease agreement between the City of Montavista and the Board of Trustees of Carnegie Library of the City of Montavista.
It's been moved and seconded to allow the mayor to sign the lease agreement between the City of Montavista and the Board of Trustees and Carnegie Public Library of the City of Montavista. Any more discussion? Jenny?
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Ellathorpe?
Aye.
Counselor Segala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, your next item is an operating agreement with airport lease. This is basically for the FBO or fixed base operator for the airport. As you recall, the council awarded a 90-day contract for these services to Jedediah Ellathorpe. And it was a different DBA, but it's now Alpine Aviation LLC, same person, same address, all that. We have the Articles of Incorporation for Alpine Aviation LLC. And between when you approved that initial contract, Mr. Ellathorpe and the airport board met and discussed some additional items in the contract. And so basically, we kinda went through those. The airport board's reviewed these, so has Mr. Ellathorpe. And essentially, most of the things that added, we added were useful. There was some arcane language in about some of the services that weren't, well, let's just say that, I think this, this particular contract has been around as long as art's been there, which is, any idea of years? Yeah, 15 to 20 years. So we kinda cleaned that up. I will say that under the interim contract, there's a lot of good things that are going on down there. They've refurbished, or are refurbishing, the terminal, which was really coolly dated, if you will, I suppose. Had the same furniture it had 20 years ago. That was not really a requirement of the contract, but essentially, we're making progress in making the airport more usable and more attractive to users. making the airport more usable and more attractive to users. We certainly have some interest in additional hangars there. As you recall, we're also in the middle of our airport master plan, so we're trying to make changes that lead in the direction of where we're going to master plan, including additional services there. So unless you all have any particular questions about the agreement itself, I would recommend, staff would recommend overall, that you authorize the mayor to execute this agreement.
I move to accept the operating agreement with the airport lease and authorize the mayor to approve the, and sign the lease. That's presented.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the operating agreement with airport for, for the airport lease, and allow the mayor to sign. Is there any more discussion? Jan?
Counselor Ellathorpe?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Segala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you very much.
This is a late comer. Yesterday, we had a bid opening for two thousand nineteen sewer CIP, which is our capital improvement project. And it's the Empire Canal Sewer Line Crossing. During all these years, the last three years that we've been doing sewer work, we've come to find out that the sewer trunk line that goes across the Empire Canal and feeds the Veterans Waste Water Plant is actually deteriorating. There are sections of it that you can actually see daylight out of, which is not good, unfortunately. So, this project that I'm bringing to you kind of late, this was the late addition, is to award the replacement of that pipe over the Empire Canal, new manholes on either side, and the necessary piping to tie into the existing sewer on both ends. Pretty simple project, had to wait until all the ditches had kind of ran their course before we were allowed to go in and do this, because we will have to run some concrete footers in there to hold the pipe on each end. So, we've worked with the ditch company, they're okay with our project, they've reviewed it from the start, so they're good. So tonight, I would like council, if you would be so kind as to award, I had three bidders this year. RMS Utilities came in with a lump sum bid of eighty-six thousand seven hundred and forty dollars. TC Pipeline came in at one fourteen eight fifty point eighty-four, and Gardner Excavating came in at two forty-nine nine hundred. So, at this time, I would ask council if you would, if you approve this project, and to award the contract to RMS Utilities Incorporated for a lump sum of eighty-six thousand seven hundred and forty dollars, and also to authorize the city manager to sign the contract. I'm looking for any questions you might have.
There's such a discrepancy in the bids, what's the difference in?
Several things could be, most of what we saw when we did the bid tabs, bid tabs are on the second page of that, so you can see, there's a large discrepancy in the mobilization cost to get here. There's some fairly large, from twelve hundred up to over twenty-nine thousand, so big discrepancy there. And then the other big one was the removal of the ductile pipe. So, if you'll look at Furnish number two, Furnish and Install, one of the companies, the other two companies were very close on that one, fifty-one thousand and fifty-seven thousand to install and furnish, twelve inch, schedule eighty, steel pipe with supports, and the other one came in at a hundred and thirty thousand. So, I'm not sure why, some of the times when you're dealing with a contractor, it's fear and what they already have scheduled. If they're booked out through the rest of the year, tendencies, they want to bid so they remain on our bidders list, but they may not be able to really complete the project in the timeframe, so in order for them to hire new staff and stuff, sometimes those increase the cost, so.
And it's pretty much, all bids are equal?
Yeah.
As far as material and that kind of thing?
Everything's bid the exact same way, we go through the engineering element, they've reviewed that, they've checked everything. Like I said, there's several things that could be different in the prices, but the two big ones were the mobilization and then that one particular pipe, furnish and install. And, like I said, two of, two of the bids were right next to each other, fifty-seven and fifty-one thousand, so those tell us and gives me confidence that the way that the spec was fine, the other company just had some issues, either couldn't get it in time, or we're using a different supplier. But the specs are all the same, they have to provide what we call submittals before we allow them to go to work, to make sure they meet the bid specs.
Right.
So where is this sewer?
Okay, so behind Home Lake Veterans Center, directly behind that, there's a canal that runs behind it, goes over to Home Lake and continues on east, that's the Empire Canal. Our main trunk line that feeds the wastewater plant, and takes all the wastewater from Sherman, down by Mountain View and that area on that eastern side of town, goes to our Veterans Waste Water Plant. It actually carries up over the top of the canal, and then drops back into the headworks at the Veterans Waste Water Plant. So the pipe is exposed to sunlight and to wind and weather and everything else, and it's, it's as old as the plant. So, this would be to replace that, and then the next time, next year, when we do an actual sewer lining, we'll line the inside of that pipe like we've done the sewer lines in town, and that'll buy us probably seventy-five, maybe eighty years of service for that line. So, it's this project, and like I said, the follow-up sewer lining will make that pipe we're good.
I also thought I heard you say that, you know, this was a bit of a surprise to come up, it's, it's within our current budget.
Oh, it's well within our cur- our current budget is a hundred and twenty dollars for our capital improvement plant, project this year, is what was budgeted, and this project comes in a little bidder at eighty-six. So not only do we have enough money, we also have some money in case there is a contingency. I don't see a contingency on this project, it's pretty straightforward, so.
Do you have a million thousand?
Hundred and twenty thousand, yes, sir.
Yeah, a hundred and twenty dollars.
Not a hundred and twenty dollars, no, sir, sorry.
I would move to award the CIP bid to RMS Utilities for eighty-six thousand seven hundred and forty dollars.
And to authorize the city manager?
And also authorize the city manager to sign the lease.
Thank you, sir.
I would second that.
It's been moved and seconded to award the CIP bid to RMS Utilities for eighty-six thousand seven hundred and forty dollars, and have the city manager sign the contract. Is there any more discussion?
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Segala?
Aye.
Counselor Ellathorpe?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Counterpoint and agree, Paul.
We got it, thank you.
Wow, I get kick out of this stuff. Forrest, would you like to give a report?
Yes, sir, I would. So I'm just saying, look at me saving paper tonight, wow, unusual. Well, we already covered some of the things in my report, but I do want to toot the horn of the Montevista Urban Renewal Authority tonight. You know, the commissioners are pretty dedicated, and it's been a long haul making progress with the Urban Renewal Authority projects. And yeah, it's, it's been a long slog to get somewhere, but we're getting somewhere now, and it's actually really, really exciting. One of those things is that, in partnership with Rio Grande Savings Loan Association, the URA Commission was able to obtain the building at one seventeen Adams Street, which is just right south of, for Southwest Bank. Sorry, Sunflower Bank, yeah, excuse me, it's been a long day. Anyway, so there is a vacant building that essentially the URA was able to attain, and through a rather long process, put out an RFP for Development Partners, and accepted a proposal from Three Guys Pub. And we actually closed on the sale of that property to the pub, and so it's done, on Wednesday the ninth. So, you know, recently told you I went to a urban renewal conference, and they're talking about all the cool things everyone else is doing, but this was actually, a lot of people that were, I talked to, were like, wow, that's really cool, you guys are doing that. So we've been able to meet a goal that I'll also talk about. So we have enterprise zone funds, we have two of them, and one, one of them is for the Sky High Park, and those are so people can make donations and get a tax benefit, if they donate over a hundred dollars, they get a state tax credit. Well, our other one is for downtown economic development and revitalization. And I just had to fill out that report for that project, and when I was thinking about doing the report, I'm like, oh, man, like, what has happened? Because we haven't got a lot of contributions, but yeah, but we got a building, and we did exactly what we said in our project application that we would do. So a pretty good achievement for the Urban Renewal Authority. We're also working on five residential properties that in November, if everything gets closed, three of the properties are for sure, two others will probably be closed on, and those will be demolished by public works crews, and we'll start on that long-term goal of cleaning up dilapidated housing units. So, you know, I'm really proud of the URA commissioners for sticking through it for the last few years to get to where we're at, and it's a good accomplishment for the community, and it will help clean it up. We did have, we did actually demo one of those properties this week, Tuesday. There was an, interestingly, the, the state did not publish this, which I wish they had, because we might have done things a little different, but there was a court case of all the state of Colorado and its regulations on the environmental requirements of disposal of residential housing units. And so basically, they had a moratorium on their regulatory requirements, which we found out about, you know, it was a hundred and twenty days, we found out about it with like fifteen days left. You might have all noticed that the Sequia House, which is owned by the Garcias, came down in demolition last week, and that contractor was available to us. And actually, URA has a contract with Cooley to do some hazmat remediation when we're doing demos. Well, so we kind of found out about this, and then the window was going to close, and we found out about that actually Saturday, the window would close Wednesday. So I made a call to the contractor, we had a discussion, got a bid, approved the bid, and that house, on Franklin, anyone that's gone down to the end of Franklin six knows exactly the property I'm talking about, which is owned by the Urban Renewal Authority, and all that mess is gone. So, that was a first strike in, in helping to clean up the community, and that was bad. I didn't bring pictures tonight, but we'll make sure the council sees what it looked like before. Rob took some pictures during, and I'll have a couple after pictures for y'all to see, but we're making headway, and I'm really excited about that. It has been a slog to get there, but commissioners have hung with us, so pretty proud day for that. The other thing that I kind of want to highlight from my report is the Jesse Mae Olson Memorial Community Garden, their annual report, which is in your packets. I think this is really a cool thing, it's put on by volunteers. They produced, you know, two thousand eight hundred sixty-five pounds of produce this year. It's pretty amazing, they don't have that much space, but they're good gardeners. They had thirty-eight hundred volunteer hours and thirty-seven volunteers, and they had donate, like donations of tools, materials, in-kind donations, in-kind was over forty-two hundred dollars. They sold some things at the farmer's market, some items, and made over seven hundred dollars. They had some expenses, people donated things, like including their water bills, all those things, and I think it's just really an amazing community effort. So they provided over four hundred pounds of produce to the food bank, fifty pumpkins to Kids Connection, sixty pumpkins to Montevista PD for distribution to elementary preschool students, and some drip lines to the Denver Community Gardens, three hundred yards of that. So, you know, it's just a, it's kind of fun, this evening, we had some kids here talking about, you know, the future, the trees, things. I think that this effort to create kids' activity with an arcade and everything is really kind of testament to, I think, a resurgence in our community, which is partly due to you, the city council, and your efforts, and, you know, I think things are coming along. So it's really cool to see those things. And this community garden grew from a little tiny thing, and the council is involved in providing property for them, and we're still working on that piece, but they already had another piece of property, and their volunteer work is pretty amazing. So this community can do some pretty amazing things, and I just thought I'd highlight that in my report this evening. So that's really all I have, but I just thought I'd go there, so.
It's good, the work is huge. It is huge. I thought it was kind of gratifying to tear that building down. Did it feel really good to just get that off? Whoever did it?
Cooley did the work, and I was glad to see it go, because it is a nice sort of drive-by.
So we improved that neighborhood immensely, just by getting, meaning people had dumped trash there, a lot of other, it was a mess, and originally, we were going to try to save a couple trees, and then actually, when I went on the ground and looked at it, I came back, told the contractor, scrape it all off and we'll start over. It was a mess. So they did a really great job for us, and even when I kind of changed the scope, they kept their price, and it got done, so pretty, pretty happy.
It'd be a great project for our little tree growers to put a couple of their trees out on that lot.
Yeah, so, anyway, good things happen in the community, I think, you know, and basically, it's mostly community members doing it, the commissioners are all community members, they don't get any compensation for the hundreds of hours they've been helping and waiting for us to make progress, so, and kudos to the community.
John Franklin's property was visible on one of our main thoroughfares, the sixth.
It was.
I would see that, I haven't been down there, obviously, in the last few days, I had no idea that was gone, congratulations to the, to the process, and of course, you had your spirited all of that, and URA, and everybody involved. That was a huge, huge, I should get cleared out of it.
And there's four more to come, so we're pretty excited.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's good, good stuff with the time, gain it. Good history for you.
Mayor, council, thank you. I would like to, I'm not, I don't have a long report, but I would like to talk about some things along with the URA, and there's been some, I think in the past, what can we do with city-owned property? And it seems that in the past, administration have thought that you had to have an election every time you wanted to sell city property, which would get expensive if you have a seven, eight thousand dollar election and sell a five thousand dollar piece of property, not very good. So Forrest asked me, he said, I need an opinion, what can we do with our property? And so I, I did some pretty good research, and I don't know if everybody got a copy of my opinion, but the opinion that I have reached is that we can sell city-owned property without an election, and that is according to our charter. Our charter is an old home rule charter, and it provides that you basically have to have a public hearing and then pass an ordinance, and then you can sell city-owned property. Now, there are some exceptions about that, if there's, for example, a deed restriction, and we got a piece of property alone- and we got a piece of property a long time ago that said it can only be used for a park, for example, there might be a problem with trying to do something with that piece of property. Or if the property is held for a public use or a public purpose, for example, this building would be held for a public purpose. And if you wanted to sell it, you'd probably have to have an election. But one can abandon a public use, in my opinion, like the old police station. I mean, that used to be for a public purpose. I don't think it is anymore. It's been abandoned. And so the research I found and came to the conclusion is that we can do, we can sell public, or sell property owned by the city so long as it's not held or used for a public purpose. So that may fall in line with different properties that a city has owned in the past, that are just sitting there, not being able to be used. And we might as well sell those properties that we don't need and get some money into the city coffers. And so I spent quite a bit of time looking and researching it. And I think that has been my conclusion, that as long as we don't have any deed restrictions, or it's not used or held for a public purpose, we're good to go with selling properties. And along with urban renewal and different properties that are owned by the city, I think we might as well get them off the books and collect some money for it. So I did provide an opinion to Forrest about that. And if he hasn't provided it to you, I'm sure you can take a look at it at some point. But it goes in line with, I think, everything that we are doing with urban renewal and trying to clean up properties and make this place a better place to be. Been busy in city court always. It seems like when we do have court, it's busy all the time. And we, when we have court, which is a couple times a month, we got our hands full, and there's a lot of stuff going on. We are, I think our philosophy has been to try and get folks to comply, as opposed to penalizing them necessarily unless they don't comply. So for example, if we have folks that need to clean up yards, our approach is compliance. Try and get them to do it and get their case dismissed without them paying a bunch of money. So, and along with that, I just wanted to bring in our LEED program, which is a diversion program that we've been working with for about a year and a half. That, it was funded as a diversion program in Alamosa. But we are probably putting as many folks through as they are through the program. And if you get a young offender that's been cited for some type of drug use, we just almost automatically run them through this LEED program. It's a diversion program. And that program tries to address their issue, such as it could be medical needs, it might be housing, it might be employment. There is a member of the DA's office that is funded as part of that program. And they try and look at a different approach to things. I mean, you can keep arresting people all day long, over and over again, and you incur judge time, clerk time, police time, jail time. All those things cost the community an awful lot of money. Where this program, it's only been in effect a year and a half, but the repeat offenders are down. And they probably keep most of their stats in Alamosa. So Alamosa's way down in terms of felonies. And I think it's moving over here into Monty as well. But the numbers of crimes are down, the repeat offenders are down. And now they're moving into Monty, and of course, South Fork, they have been doing that as well. But I think the name of the game, at least from my viewpoint, and I think the judge's viewpoint here, is to try and solve the problem, as opposed to just arresting people back and forth, back and forth, spending a bunch of count, I mean, city resources trying to do that. And the program is really, I think, been working very well. We haven't really had any repeat offenders that I know from the young folks that have been run through the program. I think it's a very good program, and they try and figure out what's the problem here. How can we maybe get a solution and get somebody off the drugs or whatever is their problem? And I just, there was a dang good article on this LEED program in the municipality, the new magazine. And so I just thought I'd bring that out, because they're saying everything that we've kind of been doing for a year and a half. It's been working. And real good news, Forrest just got an email, told me tonight. He said, well, the program has been funded to 2022. So I think hopefully, we'll continue running our folks through and try and reach some kind of solution, as opposed to just spending money and putting folks in jail for three days, letting them out, starting all over again the next week. But anyway, we're busy. There's a lot of things going. I mean, probably every two or three issues come up every week with Forrest. We try and look at them, try and come up with a solution, and hopefully resolve issues before they have to come to you guys. And so far, it's been working pretty good. So, anyway, that's really about all I have, unless you folks have any specific questions.
I don't have any questions, but I think it's worth emphasizing some of the things you just listed, dealing with the courts and alternative sentencing. You know, it's not directly, but you've been in the midst of all of this and dealing with property sales and banning properties. We talked about that before, coming up with solutions. And specifically, that LEED program that you were talking about, that's heard a report a while back from chief, that no, there had not been any repeated. I mean, that's just unheard of. I'm a tough on crime guy, and what, you know, how is all this going to work out? But everything that's been done that has simplified and expedited the work system seems to have worked incredibly well. And the LEED program is obviously a nationwide operation. And I don't know how well it's working elsewhere, but we seem to have put in, the chief and the city has put in a lot of effort in pursuing that. And it seems to have paid off. And that goes against my, what I would have probably thought. And I applaud you for that. I know for your part in it.
Sure.
Everybody else is involved. But I just wanted to mention that. That needs to be emphasized.
Yeah. It really is a team effort. I mean, you just need the chief, the police. I mean, everybody's got a part in it. And it's a team effort, I guess I look at it. But everything that seems to be going is going pretty well. And I think certainly, it starts from the council. I mean, folks have to have a direction. What do you want us to do? And hopefully, we're trying to get that job done.
Thanks for your work.
You did a great job. I like the fact we have to spend a million fifty minutes in jail. Actually, court is actually running itself sufficient.
Right.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council, obviously, chief's not here. So he asked me to give the PD report. Sorry, it's been a long day.
We appreciate you.
So we have a couple of events coming up. November 6th, eight to 10 a.m., rain brews, we have coffee with a cop, myself, and our SRO will be there. I'm trying to get a couple other officers, but everybody's welcome to come. Monday, the 21st of October, at 6:00 p.m. at the Information Center, we have Neighborhood Watch meeting. Corporal Hart will be there discussing drug interdiction, the state of drug laws and how they're going to be changing, and how that's going to affect kind of how we operate, and the diversion programs that you just talked about. So we'll touch on a few different things for the meeting. And then just a reminder again, Crime Stoppers Raffle's still going. Drawing's going to be the 31st, so only have a few more weeks to get some tickets. So, some of our stats for September, PD, we had 1,117 calls for service. And then to date, we have 1,170 summons as a PD. Crime activity update, our burglaries are well below our five-year average. With 24 burglaries to date, that's probably around half of our five-year average that we've had for the past few years, or five years. So we're doing pretty well on that with a 62% clearance rate for this year. So we're not only getting the calls, but finding who they are and charging accordingly. So, but that being said, we do have an increase in our shoplifting and theft from our retail businesses. If I remember correct, we're close to our year total already from last year. So we're definitely continuing to work on that. The good thing is, we have good relationships with the Family Dollar and Top Value and the businesses that are being affected. They're not hesitating to call us and report, you know, anybody that's in the store that's shoplifting or anything like that. So it's one of those things that we're just going to have to continue to work on. The school resource officer, David Pino, got 60 pumpkins from the Jesse May Olson Memorial Community Garden that he distributed to third graders at Bill Metz. He said it went really well. That some of the kids were just in heaven to go and pick out their pumpkins and whatnot. Said that there was one little girl, tiny little thing, that wanted the biggest pumpkin. And she couldn't even carry it. So he had to help her carry it and put it in her classroom. And she had to get help to get it out. But he said she was just in heaven that she got the pumpkin she wanted. So they said it went really well. An update for LEED. As of today, we have 27 total referrals, and that's since March. We do have something cool with LEED happening now, is Officer Zeke Cisneros is being honored by LEED to be a guest speaker at a conference in Florida. He's going to speak on LEED and how it's working for rural communities. And he was chosen because he's the biggest one that we have as far as referring people to LEED. So of our 27, he's referred 13. And so he's a big part of, you know, our numbers and a lot of our, the people that we deal with going and getting connected with LEED and getting the help that they, that's out there for them. So that's good for him. And he'll be going next month. So hopefully, we'll have something to report on how it went the next time chief gives the report. As a PD, as a staff, all our post-training is completed for the year already. We met all our requirements through our last training in October. So we don't have to worry about any last-minute things that we needed. So that's good. We have one trainee going through our FTO program now. He's finishing up Phase One. He seems to be moving right along where he should be. And we still are looking for one more position. We're actively out there trying to recruit guys in the valley. I know we're getting applications from, a lot of interest from the metro area, guys wanting to come down this way. So it's just a process. So hopefully, we can find a qualified candidate soon. And then last, our code enforcement. They hired a new code enforcement officer, Eric Lada. He's been working with Patrick. Patrick's been kind of training him, showing him the ropes and what to do. As Patrick transitions slowly to city shops, Eric seems to like it. He's doing a good job so far. Still got a lot to learn, I think, but with anything with this job. So, education and enforcement, he's saying he's been having, going around a lot with alleys and educating people of, you know, who's responsible for the alley, keeping it clean and things like that. So trying to get the word out that, you know, homeowners are responsible for their part of the alleyway, keeping it cleaned and things like that. So he's been doing a lot of that recently. And the last thing chief has is a, it's a little read. It's about addiction. It should be in your packets. It's really interesting, kind of shows a different perspective, I think. But so if you get a chance, I definitely would take a minute and read it. It's a good read. So that's all I have, unless you guys have any questions.
If you have any questions, you guys are doing a great job. I appreciate what you guys do.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Franklin, last time. Real quick, I don't have a written report for you tonight. I really only have one announcement to make. And it's from one of our citizens. They gave me a really good idea, I think, will help with some of our sweeping and actually carry over to some other things with storm drains and stuff. So be looking in the newspaper here locally. I'm going to start on November, the week of the 4th. So we'll have it in the week before. But we'll have a schedule of sweeping. As the leaves are falling off, we're going to actually publish where the sweepers will be, on which day, so citizens and residents can move their cars from the streets. And that way, we can actually clean all the way through the curb line and get each of those streets done. So really, just an announcement to let people know that that will be in the local paper here, in Montevista. So we'll get that done. And we're going to start November 4th. Hopefully, the majority of the leaves will be kind of off. So we'll get that all cleaned up and kind of help. And if people don't park their cars in the streets, that gives us the ability to clean all the way through. We won't have in the middle of winter, when things start trying to melt, we won't get those ice dams built up. So, okay? And that's it.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
I T.
Good evening.
Good evening, ma'am.
How are you guys doing this evening?
Good. How are you?
Doing pretty good. Tonight's council meeting's gone a little bit quicker than I thought it would. So that's always a plus. But it's been a busy week, that's for sure. So Fed, a lot happened and nothing happened at the same time. Brandon has been out in training, and Jim has been everywhere. So everyone's seen a lot of me and not a lot of anyone else. So I've been playing I T for a few people as of recent. But we did manage to accomplish quite a bit. We did a lot of work on our network here. We had to replace and reconfigure two switches and rebuild the whole stack. The switches are responsible for connecting every single device in the network. And I feel like that sped up a lot of things. I know we can prove it in the back. But we're more just letting it run and seeing how things are doing. We have a few more ideas there. And we also had to replace a controller on one of our, on one of our SANs. The SAN is a giant server that's built for storage. It's responsible for storing literally everything on the network. And that was causing problems. Those are very scary devices. I don't want to be near it. I don't want to touch it. And it blinking at us is not a good sign. So we had to go through with that. And that was a lot of fun. But other than that, just a lot of little things that I'll skip over, because I'm tired and want to go home, really. But just, I don't know, we've worked on some Panasonic ToughBooks. We delivered another one to the police department. I figured out some of the issues we've had over there and built a new image. And we're testing that image currently with David Pino's laptop. If everything goes well, then I'll start deploying that everywhere else. Hopefully, that will help immaculately. I mean, currently, some of the laptops take over an hour and a half to turn on in their cars. It's just, it's getting ridiculous. So I had to figure something out there. Something was going on. And then I know Jim's been attending a lot of things. He went and attended the meeting for the new Sky High building. He was here for budget and things along those lines. I'm not a part of any of that, so I'm not sure what else to report on that side of things. But other than that, we've been all over the place. So if you guys have any questions, feel free So if you guys have any questions, feel free to ask, I'm sure I'm missing a lot here, though. All right, well, in that case, pretty much, that's the goal. All right, you guys have a great evening.
Thank you. Council, committee, City Commission, and Councilor.
Let me look at me first. Let's see, what have I been doing as a councilperson? Attended the one cent tax, Steve meeting at the Chamber. It wasn't very, it was kind of fit the same people that we would normally see at those things. I am glad that I had an opportunity to be there. I've done lots of visiting downtown in businesses and actually all across the city, not just in the downtown area. And if you have an opportunity to talk up our tax initiative, please do. My conversations have been met with some reservation, I guess. And it's not just a slam dunk, folks. And I think everybody needs to remember, if we don't have that tax initiative passed, we're not going to probably, most likely, get the Sky High Park renovation. And I think that that's very key to what goes on in Montavista in the future. And it really just puts us in the same tax bracket as pretty much everyone else across the San Luis Valley. And there are many other municipalities that are also have tax questions on their ballots. And I'm just trying my best to talk to folks and have them talk it up as well. November's going to be a very interesting month for me. I also had the opportunity to visit with some high school kids this last week about the RSO. And, you know, they're also very positive about that. I, you know, just kind of quizzed them, and they said it was nice to have him in the building. He's not there very much, as much as he'd like to be, but it was just kind of a nice thing to have him there when he was there. And he makes lots of good contacts and has lots of good conversations with those kiddos. And I think that probably is about it for me.
Thank you.
Another thing just to mention on the one cent tax fund. Mayor and I, Dale, went down and shared with SLB Voices, the podcast. So if you guys get a chance, go to SLB Voices on Facebook and share the podcast. Share it with your circle, just like Chief stated, you know, it's very important for the city to have the structure, especially moving forward. How long has that building been available to us already? Can imagine what a new facility would be for us. I think it's just for us to have that, so push it. She said it's not, you know, a given, but you can, you know, make it sound appealing. Swimming pool in the third phase of all this definitely sounds appealing to citizens every time I come to talk to people about it, so disturb the pot.
Yeah, I would reiterate anything about the one cent project fund. It's going to be a game changer for Montavista, I really believe that. If we can work positively with Sky High, improve and expand our PD as well as fix some streets here in town. Just the infrastructure and overall is a phenomenal concept for a very small price in sales tax. So recently, was at the Home Garden Show discussion about next year. They're getting a little ahead here, but it comes around pretty quick, it's in April of next year. And have some innovative and exciting ideas that are coming up with that. And I'm looking forward to it, I'm very much inspired about that. The other thing that's coming up sooner than we think is a dual centennial in 2021 that we're having meetings about as we, oh, well, certainly in the next few days, with Adam State celebrating their 100th anniversary, and the Sky High Stampede, celebrating their 100th stampede coming up at exactly the same time. And this, how often do you get a 100th year, well, about 100 years, but how many, how often do you get a centennial celebration with, in conjunction with a neighboring town? And kind of a, these are not metropolitan communities, these, and it's, it is, it's, we're looking forward to, if you're ready for this, an entire year-long celebration. So rest up next year because 2021 is going to be a big time. And a lot else going on, but I'll look at that and turn it over to our Mr. Mayor.
We, I want to remind everybody of that Trump's Day Parade, which I think is the...
November 9th, isn't it?
The 10th.
9th, Saturday.
9th, November 9th?
Please.
Okay, just to remind everybody of that. And again, I will say on the tax initiative, I've been out in the community a lot, talked to several people. I feel good about it, I've got a lot of positive input, but I've also heard some of the negative as well. And for those people who are sitting and watching this on YouTube, this is going to be a crucial turning point for us in this community, and it's not us. It's all of us out here, as you sitting in the back of the room that you guys can't see. It's going to be important, and the big plus to it, I've had some discussions with Forrest. This is a project fund that is earmarked a project fund, and it is earmarked for the three projects that are on that fund, and that's the way it's going to stay. So there's not going to be any disparing of those funds. What it's earmarked for is what it will be for. And as long as I'm sitting here, I'm going to push for it. Because it's a, it's a necessary project for this community. And like Victor said, Kathy said, if we do not get these funds to be able to maintain the streets, help our police department out, and be able to put the maintenance in for Sky High Park, we could lose our funding on that park. And if we miss out on that funding, then we just backed up 10 years. That's the way I feel, 10 years. Because I've been pushing for something on the Sky High Park Committee here, that group, not just me. The whole group, we've been trying to get something going for 25 years, or if not longer. But it's very, very important, and it will be there for our youth. That facility has served its purpose, and we need it to be there when you guys are 78 years old and sitting up here trying to run the city. So with that, I will adjourn this meeting to November 7th, 6:00 p.m. Thank you for being here.